Okay.
I call this make order, roll call please.
David Chandler.
Here.
Joey Grissom.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
William Maxwell.
Here.
Bill Mosley.
Here.
Mickey Robinson. Henry Siemens.
Here.
Brian Simmons.
Here.
Robert Van Winkle.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
I want to introduce a word of prayer.
Dear most gracious heavenly father, we thank you, Lord, for this day that you provided us. Lord, we ask you to watch over this commission tonight and, Lord, we ask you to bless them, be with them in the decisions that they make here tonight for our county. We ask you, or we ask, Lord, and pray for our soldiers throughout the world, Lord, that here and domestically and abroad, that, Lord, that you bring them home safely. We ask you to forgive us of our sins and those sin against us, and we ask all this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody will stand. Chris, would you listen in praise? Item number three, approval of October nineteenth meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve.
That motion by Mickey, do I hear second?
Chairman, I say.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not motion carries. Item number four, approved redistricting resolution. Any action? Any questions, comments?
Here's that the resolution's not accurate. It doesn't even, it has a pound sign in the number of districts and the number of board members. Is that a typo or?
That's what's, yeah, see, I sent that to me. Very well could be. We can correct it through y'all if you want, or bring it back for next month.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion. We bring it back to the committee for the paperwork to be right for next month, please.
Motion, Mickey, to bring it back to the next meeting. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chandler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not motion carries. Item number five, approval of quarter reports. Questions, comments? Any action?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve quarter report, says presenting.
Motion, I will to approve. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Woodley. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Item number C is Committee A report. Will?
All right. Committee A met November first. First item of business was creation of line items in several of the funds for the American Rescue Plan. This had to be money moved into these funds, and they are listed immediately following the Committee A minutes, and I'll go through those. The general fund was to create line four seven four zero one in the amount of eighty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars, seventy cents. Fund one, one twelve courthouse jailhouse maintenance, line number forty-seven four zero one, amount three thousand, four hundred, thirty-nine dollars, fifty cents. On one sixteen solid waste line four seven four zero one, the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six, ten cents. And want service fund for, uh, fund one eighteen. Line, line number four seven four zero one, an amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty and twenty-five cents. On one seventy-one Capital Projects. Line five eight eight three oh one dash four ten, fifty thousand dollars. Five eight eight thirty-two dash seven oh seven, twenty-two thousand. Five eight eight three three dash fifty-two, five two three, eighty-two thousand. Fifty-eight eight three four dash five ninety, two hundred thousand. Five eight eight three five dash three three five, fifty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-five. On one thirty-one Highway Department, line four seven four zero one, forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, eighty cents. Uh, that was all, all of those, and, um, I'd like to make that in form of a motion to approve those amendments to the, those budgets as stated.
I will approve. Do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Will?
Uh, next item was a time owed to an employee for payout that was not included in the budget. Uh, this employee was, uh, laid off during COVID and wished to hold their, uh, time to see if they were called back and now has asked for that to be paid out. So that would be a, um, it's also attached here, general fund, one twelve, um, and the maintenance, I'm sorry, maintenance one, yeah. All right, yeah. Maintenance. Uh, line item five one eight zero zero dash one forty-nine, two oh one, two ten, two twelve. Um, in the, in the amount, total amount of one thousand, twenty-seven dollars. You can see those listed if anybody has any questions. And that is just to pay out the time that is owed to her that the county had, and I'd like to make that motion to approve that.
Will, do I hear second?
Second.
Who seconded? Mickey? Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Wait, Will.
Uh, next item was a solid waste fee exemption. It's just for information only. It doesn't require any, uh, order by the commission. Uh, we had one exemption was Allen Anderson at eight eight two four one Rocky River Road, and we did move to exempt that. It was a, a barn, and he does have a residential charge also. That was all the business we had. Thank you.
Item number seven, Committee B report.
Committee B, uh, we met on November the first. Uh, first item was we opened the bids from real estate brokers on marketing of the BDS property. Uh, we got one bid. It was from Alyssa Harmon. Uh, her bid was to market and sell a property for a five point, five percent commission. Uh, motion was made by Terry Hickey, second, and by Michael Woodley to bring that to full commission for approval. So I would like to put that into the form of a motion.
Mr. Hear second.
I'll second.
Mr. Mosley. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries.
Item number two was to lower the speed limit on the top of Rocky River Road to thirty-five miles per hour. Uh, this was asked the commit, of our commission by the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Uh, due to safety issues on the road, I think they're gonna be redoing that road down there. Uh, after a lot of discussion, uh, it, our committee decided to, uh, actually just post that speed limit at forty-five miles an hour instead of thirty-five miles per hour. Uh, the motion was made by Michael, second by Terry to send this to the full commission. So I'd like to, uh, put that into the form of a motion.
Mr. Hear second.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Go ahead.
I'm not real sure we got the authority to do that without asking the residents if they want it changed on that road. However, if all the commissioners want to do that, I'll go along with it, but I still in back of my mind don't know if we have the authority to do that or not. Mr. Mayor, you might want to speak on that.
I the commission. Yeah, I just asked her and she said the commission has the authority to do that. Uh, now then what the petition is for the, for the people that live on the road, if they want to get a petition together and bring it to the commission or bring it to Committee B, and then Committee B votes part one way or the other, and then it could be brought on to the full commission. But this commission can change that if they so, I think so.
Woodley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not motion carries.
Under new business, uh, the mayor brought to the committee that he's been approached by three different individuals about renting, uh, the Masonic building to open up and run a daycare center. Uh, we had an in-depth and discussion on that, and what we did, we have instructed the mayor to, uh, find out what it would cost the county to bring that building up to specs for a daycare center because there's a lot of things that has to be done. If the county were to do that, we'd have to add a back door. I think we'd have to do some repairs on some steps, uh. Really, we just need to see if that's gonna be a feasible thing for the county. Uh, I think he's gonna bring back some numbers at our next Committee B meeting. So really, right now, I don't need any action on that. Just want to share that with a, with a full commission. Uh, we did have some old business. We discussed some repairs on the, the old courthouse over there, uh, but we don't require any action at this time. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Item number eight, appointment of, we don't even have any names, do we?
No.
Story?
Bill, give me one a while ago. I'm gonna ask them. I've asked about a half dozen people in the last couple of months and our last month.
Item number nine, notary approval of Pamela Sue Carey. Any action?
Chairman, I'm making a motion.
Mickey, do I hear second?
Second.
Mr. Chandler. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not motion carries. Item number ten, UT extension emergency response manual.
There is, uh, no vote that needs to be made. This is just for your information that UT requires this, uh, for them to turn one of those in for six years. So that's just for your review.
Old business? Any new business?
I have two items, uh, real quick. We have, um, we have two point, nearly two point eight million dollars. It's two million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand and change that will be coming to Van Buren County. And it's, but it's specific, uh, in which is, uh, utility and infrastructure. Uh, and they want a major, excuse me, they want us to look at major issues within the utilities, uh, of water. And there are several things, and I go over that real quick. You can do water rehab with, uh, your lines, you know, with the city. We have three providers in this county. We have Warren County Utility District, City of Spencer, and Falk Creek Falls Utility District that, uh, supply water to the county. Of course, City of Spencer supplies the vast majority of that, probably about what, maybe about seventy percent, sixty-five, seventy percent of the county.
About eighty percent of it.
But when you look at that, we have we have, uh, two point eight, nearly two point eight million dollars. You can use it to rehab lines. You can use it to rehab, um, sewer plant, water plant. Also, you can extend your lines. Uh, there's, they, they encourage anywhere in the county that does not have, uh, clean water. And then what I mean by that is, is no wells, you know, get to those areas that doesn't have wells. And a couple of areas there that I, that I've thought of and just give you an idea is like Rock River Mountain. That community has been there since early nineteen hundreds, and they've never had water. Um, and that's a, that's an area there that needs it, and that's just, and Warren County Utility does, does that area. But I would like to appoint a water infrastructure committee tonight, uh, and that is to meet with the City of Spencer, meet with Falk Creek Falls, and Warren County Utility District, and look at the projects that are within, how those, uh, projects will benefit Van Buren County the most. Um, so when you look at that, and they would then take those, that plan, uh, it could be that it, I'll go to one district. It could be that you split it up into three, but there's issues in all parts of the county, so those three would be the three that we would need to meet with. So I would like to appoint four people to that, and I, if, if those accept that, I will give them a manual of what was sent to me. This money will not be issued to Van Buren County until probably somewhere between March and May of twenty twenty-two. It has to be expended by December of twenty twenty-four. So you got a little bit, but you have to have your projects in place and submitted by May of next year. So there's some work to be done. And I'd like to, uh, for those, and it's gonna affect those districts more than likely, I'd like to, uh, appoint Will Maxwell, Henry Siemens, Brian Simmons, and Terry Hickey to that board. I'll appoint four people. Four commissioners. And I'll submit that to the commission for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve that. Chairman, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Who seconded it? Mickey? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not motion carries.
I got one more. Uh, we have had two audit committee members that have moved out of the county, and I would like to appoint, uh, those two. One was, uh, uh, Ms. Royal Gale, and, uh, the other was Teresa Walker, and I would like to appoint David Sullivan and Kale Crane to the audit committee. And they will meet next month, by the way, so. And I'll submit that to the commission.
Any action?
Need a motion? I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Mosley. Do I hear a second? Second, I will. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Any new business from the commission?
I have one item. Um, I've been approached by several people of the community as well as my school board member, talked with him about this, um, but I've had several people talk about more representation on school board. Uh, I'd like to get people's thoughts about that. Uh, it's one of the biggest budgets in the county. That's what I've had conversations with. That's one of the biggest county budgets. We only have five people, um, you know, operating, overseeing that budget. That is gonna, I feel like that's gonna become an issue in the future, the school budget, um, and I feel like there should be some more oversight after talking to several people in the community on that board. Um, I think we should increase the members of the school board in some shape, form, or fashion, and however that see fit. I'd, I'd like to see it be, uh, two from each district, just as the county commission is. Is that, does that have to be in a resolution form, or how, how do we approach that? It would have to be in a resolution form, uh, to go with that. If you decided to do that, the resolutions that, uh, we have tonight that would be brought back could be added to that, I think, could it not? Yeah. So, but yes, it would have to be in a resolution, but you could add it into your redistricting part, which makes sense for it to be a part of that. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to add that to the redistricting.
To add, uh,
Resolution.
Two commissioners per, or two school board members per district.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle.
Okay. He wants to add that to the resolution. You want to add two?
Hang on, let me ask him a question here. Should that be a separate resolution, or could it be a part of the?
There's one thing though.
Yes, that was what I, I was, my intention was, would be to add one per district, and there would be two per district at large in each district.
Total ten.
Correct, total of ten, yes.
Now, do we know what the cost of this would be to the county? I mean, before we vote on this, I mean.
It could be a savings if you got.
From my understanding is they are paid, uh, two hundred dollars a meeting, um, and then they have, um, one meeting a month, or I'm sorry, they're paid two hundred dollars a month. And then that would be obviously times twelve by five. Uh, I'm sure there would be a little bit of other associated costs, but
About twelve thousand dollars.
About around twelve thousand dollars with maybe some other associated costs.
They meet every month?
I was told every month, but, uh, sometimes in December they don't meet.
To me, that is the largest budget in the county, so I think needs more representation.
I mean, it is the largest budget, but at the end of the day, it comes back to the budget committee and the county court to pass that budget. So if we have issues with that budget, it falls on us as county commissioners to try to solve those issues. Just, you know, my thing is, I don't know what it benefits the county to add five more school board members. I really, um, that's my opinion.
I have children, I have children. I've had kids, and I've got a kid in school now. I mean, I think it's more representation for them.
That's it. I just don't know if five more school board members is gonna solve what issues we think our school system has right now, but that's just my opinion.
More oversight.
Then we put more eyes on the budget and have more representation. I mean, it's, um, what the county commission sees is the final budget that the school board has approved. Uh, you know, we're not.
I mean, if we want to know what the school's budget is, I mean, it's up to us as individuals to seek that information out. I mean, it's out there. We can find it. We can educate ourselves on the school's budget. But, yeah, that's just my opinion.
Takes three people to pass that budget. Three votes.
Well, I mean, if I can say something here, you know, you have a lot of, not just your budget, but you have other things that, you know, projects and things of that nature and and the retainment of teachers, you know, as far as when they come off of, uh, or when they're going up for tenure and things of that nature, that, and I think that may be a lot of what Will's talking about. It's probably not just the budget. And I, I honestly don't have, I'm not siding one way or the other, but I, I see point of his and, and Henry's as well. But I think the more of you would, the more you have to be able to look at not only their budget, but other operating procedures as well, and policies and things of that nature, you probably are gonna be better off. And you, you have that more representation where now each one of your districts, there's two people in there. So like in a second, if they can't get hold of Henry, they can get hold of Bill, or vice versa. Um, you know, and somebody can voice that opinion, it may be that they need something now, and there's another school board member available for them. They could be out of town working, or they could be out on town on vacation, and when something happens, and y'all know as well as I, I do, I don't have a child in the school system anymore, but they could, um, you know, when something happens with your child, and Katina probably knows this better than anybody, they're gonna want to answer and answer right now, and what they get from her or the director, or they, they're gonna go to a school board member, may go to that route first, you know, so. I mean, I feel like that with the current budget climate, that this is, this would be a good thing, and, you know, in ten years, if the county commission sees fit, we can go back to five. I mean, I guess that would be when it would come up again under redistricting in um, ten years. That's what I said, yeah, in ten years. So maybe I did say, but I meant to say ten. Um, you know, if the county commission saw fit in ten years to go back to five, I mean, that would be at the discretion at that point.
I just don't want to feel like we're doing something as a knee jerk reaction. You know, I mean, uh, you know, if it passes, more than likely, you're not gonna go back to five. If it passes, if you get ten, you're not gonna go back to five.
Listen, that's for a while.
Well, I mean, it comes back, I mean, it comes back to this court. If we think we have budget issues within the school system, then we need to handle that when we go over their budget. And we start that process in January. That's where we need to hash out all that. But, you know, I just don't see we're adding five more school board members to help. I mean, we've been fortunate to sit on this county court, and we can all kind of come together for what's best for the county, but now we've had in the past where you couldn't get five people to come together on anything. That's what I'm worried about with the school system. Is that how it's gonna be?
Is that not a good thing?
What's that?
I mean, not having people having a good discussion on something and make sure it's coming to the right point.
Oh, yeah. But sometimes you can't get them to even, I mean, come together on anything. It's bigger government. I mean, you know, I'm a small government person, you know, but.
Well, I got a motion and a second on the table.
I had the motion, he seconded it.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
No.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
I'm staying.
Mickey Robinson. Henry Siemens.
No.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
No.
Three noes, two abstain, and five yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other item under new business. Um,
I'm not trying to interrupt you. Can we, can we take this back and just, um, before we come back to the next meeting and get some more information on this? I mean, that's the reason I voted sustain, but I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm kind of like Greg. I'm for it, and I'm kind of against it, you know, I mean, it's, I'm kind of in middle about it, so.
It would require another motion and second it to bring it back up unless we. Hey, do it in another meeting. Yeah, that's what I meant, yeah. What? Do you have a question? It didn't pass.
Didn't pass. A tie or it didn't. It can't come back up.
It can't come back up. It could be the same, could be the same motion. You could bring it up every month as far as I know.
But this will give a month's discussion amongst the, the community. Any other new business?
Yes, I have one other item. Um, there was a, uh, in the local purpose tax, which is the fire department fund, we needed to create a line item for maintenance and repair of equipment. Um, the fire departments, the county has SCBA equipment that's spread throughout the county on fire department and on the fire departments. Um, that was, that equipment is required to be tested yearly. Uh, we had that tested just last week. And that was, we failed to get that in the budget correctly. So we need a line item in the budget to satisfy that, to pay that bill. So that bill is, is, um, will be coming in the next few days. And we need to make an adjustment in the budget. It's not, um, it's not incurring any more expense. It's just moving some money out of fund balance to take care of that bill. We left the money in their fund balance. We've already, all the fire departments understand how this is gonna work. Uh, we've agreed to that. And it will be paid for out of that fund to maintain the equipment that we have. And we need to create line in, in fund one twenty, local purpose tax, we need to create line five four three one zero. Item three, three, six, maintenance and repair of equipment of twenty-five hundred dollars. And I'd like to make that in form of motion.
Second. Second, Mickey. Roll call, please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joey Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? No, motion carries.
Good, uh, let's, let's schedule a work session before the next month's meeting. And also too, I would like to ask is, uh, December the fourteenth, our meeting in December is the twenty-first, and that's the week of Christmas. Uh, you want to leave it on the twenty-first?
The week before if we could.
Is there, is there?
Christmas week. Santa Claus is coming to get you.
Will, you and Henry, y'all have.
What do you, I mean, I'm good. I mean, we want to move it to the fourteenth. Is that what we're wanting to do or? Yeah. I mean, I'm good. I'm good.
Is everybody else okay? They got crazy schedules, so.
December fourteenth.
Okay. Then secondly, I'd like to go ahead, uh, let's go ahead and do that, uh, work session on the school that, uh, Mickey was talking about, asked to do an informational work session for the commission before the fourteenth. I'll have a date in mind. Again, I have to go back to Will and Henry because they got that.
Next to the previous week, I mean, I'm off the eighth and ninth, but I mean, I could.
What?
December fourteenth?
Yeah, for the regular December meeting.
I mean, I could, I mean, if we want to do it sometime in the evening, I could, I mean, I can get away from work. They'll let me away.
Will, what do you, do you look like on the twenty-ninth or thirtieth? Of November.
Sorry. I could do the thirtieth.
Everybody okay with the thirtieth for a work session? We'll do it.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Let's, let's, uh, schedule for five o'clock. Five or when you go a little later.
We'll make it work.
What? If you want to be here at AM, come on by. Yeah. So let's, that way we'll go ahead and have a schedule.
I can do that.
And, and so.
Are you talking about December the thirtieth at seven?
No, 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 November, November. No, uh, December the fourteenth will be the change from the twenty-first regular, yeah. And then on the thirtieth, we will do the work session.
At five o'clock. Is that correct?
Of November, November thirtieth, yes. Because if we, if that was to be changed, we got to put it in the, that redistricting resolution. We can add it to that and send that in at the same time. The comptroller's office has to have the plan by January first. So that's still gonna give us plenty of time. Okay, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
I want to address the board.
We accepted it.
That was a committee B.
I'm making a motion, Will, uh, adjourn.
Motion, I make you adjourn.
Second.
Second, Will. All in favor, say aye.